I'd like to call to order the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners, the 10 o'clock meeting for February 8, 2022. At this time, please silence all your phones, electronic devices, and mute your microphones. Please rise for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh merciful Creator, Your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for Your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of Your good gifts. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no division and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am. District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Here.
District two, Commissioner Moore.
Here.
District four, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Here.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Here.
District five, Chairman Starkey.
No, I'm three.
Three, three, sorry.
Here. Okay, so now's the time for public comment. Citizens are given an opportunity to comment on any current or future agenda item coming before the Board and on any other business under the Board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment from those who are here in person. Then we will take public comment from those who are pre-registered for a WebEx link and are currently on cue. We request that when you address the Board, comments are not directed personally against a Commissioner or team member, but rather directed at the issue. This provides mutual respect between Board members and the public. After stating your name and address to the clerk, a three-minute timer will be activated. After two minutes, a single beep will indicate you have one minute left, and when your time is up, two beeps will sound, and you should close your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected automatically when their time is up. So do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We have one person here in the chambers, Mr. Richard Raymond. If you could come to the podium and give us your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Richard Raymond, 12407 Hagar Drive, Newport, Richey.
Oh, came along well. Good morning.
Yeah, I'm here because I have a problem with dog odor, dog feces. This has been going on for like four months. I've called code enforcement. They were slow at it, but they finally got there. It was, they were given a warning. They didn't comply. They come back, they gave them a court date. The court date is March 24th. I cannot open my windows. I cannot breathe without gagging. I can't have guests, family at my house. I've called the health department. I've called County Commissioner's office. After calling the Commissioner's office yesterday, I started getting calls back this morning from code enforcement. There's a lot of health issues with this. I have a breathing problem. My girlfriend has a breathing problem. I've brought a lot of this up to where it's an environmental problem. We have well waters. We have 20 foot from their house. They have nine dogs on a 70 by 110 lot. I'm told that you can have nine dogs, but they do not pick up the dog poo. They urinate, they have all the feces everywhere. I've called animal control. I wasn't home, but last Friday, my neighbor said that they come out. It's been going on for four months, and I worked in a septic business, and if you had a gallon of septic on the ground, or if you had an odor from a septic, the health department was there right away. But this is a lot worse, and they won't come out. It's not a problem to them. I've got a list of things that's unhealthy. It's airborne. It's worse than human waste. And I have to live with this, and now I have to wait until the 24th, they won't comply, and I can't open my windows. I can't breathe in my own yard. I want something done. I can't live like this. It needs to be something done now. I've had it. I got a call from code enforcement on the way here this morning because I called the Commissioner's office, Ms. Fitzpatrick's office. Well, now they're doing something, but I mean, they knew I was on my way here to talk to you. So, I mean, now they're on the ball, but they're still not doing anything. Now what do I do? Where do I go?
Who's your Commissioner?
Ms. Fitzpatrick.
And can I give him my card?
Yeah.
And I have been in contact with code, as you know, and I'm sure they were the ones in contact with animal control as well, so now that we got the-
I appreciate Todd calling.
Absolutely. Now that we got the ball rolling, I will continue to follow up with your case.
And if you want to come out to my house, you will be amazed at how I have to live. On a warm day, you don't go out in the yard.
Kristina, we gotta-
Thank you. I'll just give you the card.
All right, is there anybody else here who would like to address the Board at this time, who has not signed up or? Okay, so we will move on to resolutions. And let's read the first one.
All right. Resolution number 22036, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, commending Raymond Wright for 28 years of dedicated service to Pasco County and congratulating him on his retirement. Whereas Raymond Wright began his career with Pasco County on November 29, 1993, with the Roden Bridge Department, and ended his career as a maintenance technician for with the Facilities Management Department. And whereas throughout Raymond's career with Pasco County, he has proven himself to be an invaluable asset to those he served daily, whether it be coworkers or citizens. His outstanding work ethic and positive attitude have earned him respect from all county departments, including fire rescue and the Pasco County Sheriff's Office. Whereas Raymond worked diligently on many of the county's buildings and structures to keep us all safe and healthy in our workplaces, using his proficiency in many trades and his dedicated service did not stop until after his shift, as Raymond also worked late nights and sometimes into the early morning hours while being on call. And whereas in 2018, a young child in the Dade City area was playing around the family in-ground pool and inadvertently stuck his hand in the skimmer. The child's arm was sucked in up to the elbow and became lodged in the skimmer and was unable to be pulled out. The child's parents called 911 and fire rescue was there within minutes. After arriving and determining that they needed additional help and equipment, they placed a call to the Dade City Facilities Management Office, and without hesitation, Raymond grabbed a jackhammer and headed to their location. Raymond arrived and instantly knew what needed to be done. Raymond began to strategically use the jackhammer to remove the concrete decking around the skimmer while fire rescue kept the child calm. Together, they were able to safely release the child's arm and hand. And whereas Raymond has not only, was not only a maintenance technician, he was also a dedicated employee who took pride in his work, and most importantly, he was a great friend to those with whom he worked. And whereas on November 30, 2021, Raymond officially retired from the Pasco County Facilities Management Department, and the Board of County Commissioners deem it appropriate to recognize his contributions to the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners and the citizens of Pasco County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, in session duly assembled, that said Board hereby expresses its deepest appreciation to Raymond Wright for his 28 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Pasco County, done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this eighth day of February 2021.
I approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Congratulations, Commissioner Oakley.
Raymond, we certainly, we certainly appreciate everything you've done for the county and yourself and your family and your friends and all. Definitely appreciate all the good work you've done here in this county and in the neighborhoods. And thank you for helping that girl that time with that issue with the pool, and I'm sure you've saved her from some terrible body injury or maybe even her death. So we're greatly appreciative of all that you've done in that circumstance.
Thank you.
And it's great that you're the person you are, and all of our staff members and all of our helpers like you and Roden Bridge and all are also the same way, I know, because they work very hard for the county and they've worked very hard to keep the neighborhoods clean. So with that, I also, if you want to continue working, I think they might have a place to use you, so since we're short of people. But you may look forward to retirement, and you do. We certainly understand that, but we certainly appreciate having you and would love to have you continue on, so yeah, great, thanks.
Thank you very much.
You want to speak?
No, just thank you.
Well, if you want to, I've got a parchment here to give you, and with the board come down, I want to take a picture.
Okay, so we're going to switch, we're going to go to Res three.
Resolution number 22064, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, designating January 23rd, 29th, 2022 as Certified Registered Nurse Anesthesiologist Week to recognize the importance of the role in providing high-quality care for the citizens of Pasco County. Whereas Certified Registered Nurse Anesthesiologists are advanced-practice registered nurses. Providing anesthesia care to patients in the United States for more than 150 years, CRNAs are among the nation's most trusted professions. And whereas legislation passed by Congress in 1986 made nurse anesthesiologists the first nursing specialty to be accorded direct reimbursement rights by Medicare. And whereas CRNAs are primary anesthesia providers in rural communities and continue to be the primary providers of anesthesia care to U.S. military personnel. And whereas CRNAs practice in every setting in which anesthesia is delivered, from traditional hospital surgical suites and obstetrical delivery rooms to critical care access hospitals, from ambulatory surgical centers to the offices of dentists, podiatrists, ophthalmologists, pain management specialists, and more. And whereas CRNAs are qualified to make independent judgments regarding all aspects of anesthesia care based on their education, training, and licensure. And whereas CRNAs are trusted anesthesia experts on the front lines, caring for patients' safety and compassionately, delivering specialized, cost-effective care to all patients, from newborns to seniors, for every type of procedure in all types of facilities. And whereas CRNAs are courageously serving on the front lines of the ongoing coronavirus pandemic, using their advanced skills in airway management, intubation, and ventilator management to care for the sickest patients, leaving their homes and families to travel to hospitals and facilities across the country so they can assist where the need is greatest. And now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said Board hereby designates January 23rd to the 29th, 2022 as Certified Registered Nurse Anesthesiologist Week, done and ordered in regular session with a quorum present and voting this eighth day of February 2022. Move for Paul.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, I'm really honored to be the sponsor of this resolution, and I have a daughter that works in the healthcare industry. She's a PA, orthopedic PA. And my goodness, what your profession has been through the last few years, I just-
It's been quite interesting, for sure.
Yeah.
And I appreciate you guys recognizing us. A lot of times, I would say we're really good at our job, so you never remember us. The medications that we give, we are the face that you see right before you go to sleep, but you don't actually remember all the nuances before you actually go to sleep or while you're during it. The CRNA is with you the entire time, that you are asleep, every single second, every medication judgment call, we're there to make sure that you make it through your surgeries or through your events of life without a hitch. So I appreciate this.
And Commissioner Moore was in the healthcare industry, so I'm sure-
Yeah, and I, yeah, I was for quite some time. My wife is also a master's level registered nurse. She actually is now a nurse instructor, professor, and teaches herself. So yeah, thank you for all you do. Been around you guys many a times, on the outside of the business world and in the surgery room as well. So we appreciate you, and thank you so much, and being a nurse anesthetist. And I would say this to our people at home, what a great career. There's a huge need, as we know. And I will tell you what, what a great career. So if you're thinking about going in the medical field, being a nurse anesthetist is a great career. It really is.
It's a long road to get to, but it's so worth it.
Yes.
There's a lot of education training.
It's a lot of education.
Mm-hmm.
It's worth it.
Commissioner Moore, I just heard, I think it was Sunday on 60 Minutes, I'm not touching, it was going in the background, that there is a real shortage of nursing instructors.
There's that as well.
So it's good that your wife's doing that.
Yep.
So we need a lot more of you in the future.
Absolutely.
All right, so we go down and take a photo. We have two here.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Ma'am, can we have your name for the record?
Krista, K-R-I-S-T-A, Berrios, B-E-R-R-I-O-S.
Okay, now we're going to do RS two.
Resolution number 22065, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring the kumquat pie as the official pie of Pasco County. Whereas kumquats, miniature citrus fruit, first arrived in Pasco County in the late 1800s. And whereas since their arrival, growing kumquats has become both a hobby and a commercial activity that grew the town of St. Joseph into a leader in kumquat production. And whereas St. Joseph's rich and flavorful history in kumquat production laid the groundwork for Dade City to become the host of Florida's only kumquat festival, the Dade City Kumquat Festival. And whereas the kumquat festival brings tens of thousands of visitors to Dade City every year to experience our vibrant community while they enjoy a bounty of kumquat-based products. And whereas for generations, the Guti family has played a role in the growth of kumquat production since they first settled in the St. Joseph community in 1883. And whereas the Guti family are renowned for their hand in making Dade City the kumquat capital of the world. And whereas kumquat pie, an iconic dish that represents the history of the kumquat in Dade City, was created by Rosemary Guti and is the most popular kumquat product served and sold at the annual Dade City Kumquat Festival. And whereas on January 26, 2022, the Pasco County Tourist Development Council voted to name the kumquat pie as the official pie of Florida's sports coast. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners voted to name the kumquat pie as the official pie for Pasco County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said Board hereby designates and declares the kumquat pie as the official pie of Pasco County, done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this eighth day of February 2022. Move for Paul. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't know, I was going to say, what about the blueberry pie? But-
You're in District one. You happen to be in District one.
Blueberry pie can come into play.
It'll be a fizzle jam.
There you go.
All right, Commissioner Moore, the floor is yours.
Yeah, oh, thank you, Madam Chair. If we could have the Guti family, if you don't mind, if you could come up to the podium right there for a second. Whoever would like to come up.
Mr. Guti, too.
Yeah.
This is such a bomb.
Yeah.
So let me give you a little history of how this got rolling. So the Tourist Development Council, we had our meeting two weeks ago. We were talking about the kumquat festival, and we have John Morris from the Dade City Chamber here as well. We're going to have him come up and take a picture in a second with us. We were seeing the pictures of this miraculous kumquat pie, and we know the history behind it here in Dade City and across the Pasco County. So wouldn't it be a great idea to make kumquat pie the official pie of Florida's sports coast, which is our, obviously, our tourism arm of Pasco County? So we voted on that. Said, well, let's get to the next level, let's make this bigger. It needs to be the official pie of Pasco County as a whole. So that's what we brought to you today. It was voted on. It is officially, officially, the pie of Pasco County, the kumquat pie. And the family, I'm going to let you say a few words in a second, second here, the Guti family pioneers in the kumquat industry. But his, your wife, your mother, was the creator of kumquat pie. And there's her picture right there. Ms. Rosemary was the creator of kumquat pie. So we are thrilled to have you here today to celebrate, you know, your history, your family's history, and the history of Pasco County and kumquats. So thank you for being here. We really appreciate it. And I know you have a few words. You can tell us more than I said about the history of kumquat and kumquat pie, and why it's so important to Pasco County.
The kumquat pie, the kumquats are so important because for years, we always brought money into this county. We didn't, we didn't use, have a lot of local sales. All of our sales were always abroad in the northeast and out of the country, and even as far over in California in the original years. But that money came to Pasco County. And so it was spent. It was spent by our workers, it was spent by us, you know, buying things in Pasco County, supporting, you know, the clothing, all of our workers would buy gas, food, whatever. But as time went on, we had disease, we had freezes. Now after the 1983-85 freeze, we lost our identity in a sense, because we originally used with leaves to put in citrus packages and use for decorations. We shipped back then probably 30,000 to 50,000 bushel of kumquats, and there were three of us, three different people that were doing that before the 83 freeze. Then it became citrus canker, which quarantined us where we could only do the kumquat by the fruit itself. And we had lost our identity because all the little fruit stands all over in Pasco County and all the counties north of here and east of here, they lost their fruit stands because of the quarantine, also because of the freeze. After that, we kind of had to create things. We already had marmalades, jellies, jams, stuff like that, chutney made out of kumquats. But my mother came up with this kumquat pie recipe. After a while, we put that recipe in every little container that we shipped. We still today put that inside of our container that we sell to the, to Publix. As time went on, then they created the kumquat festival 25 years ago. The kumquat pie was the big hit. Everybody came to find out what kumquats were all about. Meanwhile, they tasted this pie. This pie is a very simple pie. Anybody can make it, whether you're a baker or not, because it's just doing ingredients. We make the pies at our packing house. We sell them to other places and also to individuals that come by and buy the pie and buy the marmalades and jellies and all the kumquats themselves. We appreciate you all recognizing us. It's been a long, rough, rough industry. We're still fighting citrus greening, diapreppies, and citrus canker. But we have, also have a bigger demand than we could ever grow. There are so, so many people, they use it in beers and wines now, and also some ciders. So it can be used for all kinds of things. You can take a kumquat and drop it in a glass of water, and I could spend the next four hours talking about kumquats. So I'm going to let this go, but thanks to mom.
Stay here for one second. Madam Chair, can we bring Adam Thomas up from Florida's sports coast, who wanted to talk about the importance of what kumquats actually do for tourism in Pasco County and how they work very closely with the Dade City Chamber and John Morris?
Well, they, as everyone knows, the kumquats are unique to Pasco County, and it brings over 40,000 people in on an annual basis to actually attend the kumquat festival. So as a tourism perspective, it's an economic impact at the uniqueness of the selling proposition of kumquats. You can't even say without breaking a smile. So it's very unique to our marketing efforts and the partnerships that we have within the city of Dade City, so.
Thank you. Before we can come in.
Yes, Mr. Oakley.
Well, I shared in purchasing the kumquats from him when I had the citrus plant right there at Fitch 475, the freezes, we had seven freezes during the 80s, which was tough for him and tough for us. We're all dealing in citrus, and we use those kumquats in different packages and shipping them out. So we, we shared business throughout those years, and I don't know how Greg and his family have held up to do this, but they've had an uphill battle ever since. But you got to commend them for carrying on and keeping this alive, and hopefully the weather and the diseases go away so you can even flourish more. It's just been a great part of our community here, and we appreciate what you do. We were talking earlier about how the growth is coming to some of the rural area, and you have to be, when I was shipping fruit, I had to be careful when I sprayed my grapefruit, fresh grapefruit, because it might blow onto another neighboring home nearby in the rural area. And so we had to be very careful. He has that same thing happening to him, and we share in doing the same kind of business like that, so, and spraying. But I certainly appreciate the Guti family very much.
Can you say again, while folks are listening from all over, where it is they can go buy your products?
Right now, right now, our products are available at our packing house.
Which is where?
Which is St. Joe. At 31647 Guti Road, Dade City, Florida. It's six miles west of here at our little packing house. It can also be bought here in town. There's the Farmhouse Market and Cafe that sells our products. Also the Jiffy Store in San安 and Charlie's Market out in St. Joseph. We're closing, we're going to be closing down our gift shop to two days a week because of the fact we don't have a lot of ripe kumquats right now, and we don't have our commercial business. So we're just going to hold down to that. But the pies are available in any one of those four places.
I know someplace on the west side that might be able to carry them to you.
I didn't, I don't have it. You don't carry them at the, at your-
Do we have pies there right now?
You don't have them yet.
Okay, well, I'll have to come by there after, even maybe today and get some. We'll work a deal here.
We can supply them. We've got-
Chair, there's also, and we all have a piece in front of us, we want to try it before we walk down, but there's actually in the hallway, if you're here in the audience today, you came the right day, because you're going to be able to taste a piece of kumquat pie yourself in the hallway, compliments of Florida's sports coast and the Guti family.
All right, well, we're moving down the line, so Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
I would like to say thank you for everything that you do, and I remember picking kumquats off my neighbor's trees and all my friend's trees, so I hope our youth can enjoy kumquats for years to come. And I will be having to stop at your store very soon, because pie is delicious.
Well, thank you. That is the other funny thing about a kumquat. If you go somewhere and you wear a shirt that says the word kumquat on it, you better be willing to talk to people, because they're going to ask you, what's a kumquat? And by the time you're done, you know, we had, we had a story of a guy that was at a Georgia State Fair, he was wearing one of our kumquat growers shirts, and that he had bought from our shop, and he was standing there, and somebody said, well, what's a kumquat? And his wife ended up sitting down, going to the car, finally went up to him after- And his wife ended up sitting down, going to the car, finally went up to him after forty-five minutes, said, look, we need to get in the fair, he needs to quit talking about Kumquats. So, you can really get yourself tied up. But I love all the stories, the, my mother's brothers, uncle's sister's cousin used to bring them for me when they come to Florida, you know, all these different people that would, that would come to Florida, get Kumquats and take them back north. Of course, back then, they didn't have the pie, they didn't have a lot of the other ones. So, you know, we're unique to grow them here in Pasco County. We love Pasco County, we're not going anywhere, of course, because we have, our roots are pretty deep, so, you know, we just appreciate y'all acknowledging us.
And Commissioner Mariano?
I'd like to say, I remember first coming to the Kumquat Festival, the first time trying that Kumquat Pie, it was absolutely delicious. I, I will apologize, we should have done this years ago, so, apologize for that, and I just want you to know, there's a shortage of Kumquat Pie in District Five.
Thank you, sir. Chair, one more, I'm saying one more thing.
While I was hunting in Georgia in November, I have my name on my personal office across the street, and my number's there. A gentleman called me, I answered the phone in Georgia, he said, is this the place where Kumquat Festival happens? In Dade City. And I said, yes, sir, it's very, it's coming up soon. So John Morris, the word's out, and everybody hears it, so, but I got that call this year, and I, it was pretty amazing, he just called me out of the blue, is this where Kumquat Festival happens?
Is there gonna be a sticker on your pies that says, the official Pasco County Pie?
Yeah, that's, that's a great idea, isn't it? That's great. It's, it's official.
Thank you, can I get some funding for that?
It goes into the record, it's, can you bring your entire family up?
Yes, we'll bring everybody up.
And your picture of your mother, too?
Let me, let me stand up.
I wanna say just a few things. Greg does such a wonderful job of talking to you, that I don't have to say much, but I wanna say that Kumquat Growers was founded in 1971. We've been in business now for fifty years.
Nice.
And we started as a, as an organization owned by five growers, and now we're down to just the two of them, two families, the Guti family and the Ny Hopper family. So that's who we're owned by right now. And I, I don't wanna let the Ny Hoppers out of it, because they contributed a whole lot to it, too. I also wanna thank two organizations, the Catholic Women's Club in San Antonio. The first year, I looked for somebody that, that would sell our pies at the festival. We didn't have enough people for it to go, to go around. So, what I did is I went to the Women's Club in San Antonio and sold them on the idea of, of taking the project. They did, they made six hundred pies.
Wow.
On faith that they would sell them at the festival. They sold out.
Nice.
And they've been selling out almost every year since then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want us to stay up here?
Okay, we'll stay up here, guys.
I'm gonna squeeze in here with you guys, we're gonna want this right over the wall.
I love the citrus. I might put that on my menu.
Let's spread out just a little bit, quick. Right, there we go, there we go, there we go.
Fitch, what you got?
Well, there's a lot of people, that's what we do.
Hold this with us here. Here we go.
Look at Brian first, and then I'll step in and do a photo app.
Right here, one, two, three. Thank you.
Should I hold up my pie slide?
Look right at me, please. Smile. Commissioner, can you look?
Hold on, one and John, and you're two.
Oh, John?
Come on, now, get in.
All right, I'm gonna take another pie while we're waiting. So light and fluffy.
All right, everybody look right at me, please. All right, big smile, one more. All good.
Excellent.
All right, good job.
It's not on my diet.
Good job, Greg.
No entitlement to a second.
Thank you. Is someone there today?
About two, Marie.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You look awesome today.
You guys in the audience, this isn't the normal occurrence in the county commission day, we don't hate on pies, it's usually very boring in here.
No. Okay, one more bite. Do we have any polls for the consent? I don't have a, a poll sheet. Do we have any polls for the consent agenda?
Really, that's what happened, the, the whole feed cut off during the whole thing, from the county?
It did.
Yeah.
Oh, so you didn't get the publicity of the consent?
We'll get it, we have a video.
Oh, you have a video, you can re, when you redo it?
Yeah, it's just a live stream, it's a couple of problems.
Okay. Do we have any polls for the consent agenda, because we don't have, we have nothing?
No, we don't have any, we don't have any.
Okay. All right, so we are on to the consent agenda, do, do any of the board members have anything they wanna poll today?
No, ma'am.
I think this is the first, actually.
Well, this is absolute first.
Move approval.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. That has never happened.
Opposed? No, I don't think so.
That was Greg.
Okay, so now we are on to resolutions. Let me get over here. Not resolutions, the Rs. Regular. R30, good morning.
Hi, good morning, David Engel, Office of Economic Growth. I am here today to present Mr. Mike Davis, who's the chairman of the Jobs and Economic Opportunity Committee. The Board of County Commissioners created the Jobs and Economic Opportunity Committee in 2015 by resolution, and every year, the committee is required to present a annual report to the board. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Engel. Commissioners, how are you today? Definitely need to do a repeat of the pie. I had a problem with mine, it wasn't big enough.
I thought it was too big, but mine was the same way, it wasn't big enough.
Yeah, yeah. Does this work? Okay. All right. So, good morning, again, my name is Mike Davis, I'm with, I'm the chairman of the Jobs and Economics Opportunities Committee. We have a short presentation for you. As you know, the Jobs and Economics Opportunities Commission was created back in 2015. It is a, is comprised of citizen volunteers from various industries, from finance, banking, real estate, agriculture, mining, to give insight and be an oversight committee, also give recommendations to the Jobs and Economics Opportunities Commission Trust Fund, which is funded by the Pay for Pasco, at least part of Pay for Pasco. We do have nine members within the, within the, on the board. Part of this, the Pay for Pasco initiative is to provide incentive money to businesses to grow the jobs and economy of Pasco County. So, why do incentives matter here in Pasco County? And one of them is to entice businesses to come in and create jobs, so that people will not only work, but live also within Pasco County, and, and we get a return on that tax money revenue over the life of the employees living inside Pasco County. Part of that is also to help encourage higher wages within Pasco County, and to also diversify Pasco County's tax incomes. So how's that work? The, in the slide, the, these are all of the largest manufacturers in Pasco County, the ones that are highlighted, those are manufacturers that have received incentive money from the Pay for Pasco Tax Fund, and those are, have been approved by the board. And then, they're vetted through the Office of Economic Growth, and the Jobs and Economics Opportunities Commission gets to review and give insight and direction on whether they are doing this appropriately, and, and the presence of transparency government, that is why we are a citizen-based committee. This is a very full slide of a lot of things, yes, you might need your glasses.
Yeah, I'm trying to see my screen.
That's David's fault. Basically, this is just programs and how much they have been awarded by the Board of County Commissioners, how much they've been paid, and so forth. If I, let me look at it real quick, I can give you some quick numbers, because mine's a little bit smaller, actually, this one, nope, my, I missed it, where is it? Are we missing a slide? I think we're missing a slide, are we missing a slide here? My apologies. Yeah, there is a slide, oh, there we are, sorry, I fat fingered it. It's a whole lot easier. So.
It's a big number.
Huh?
That's a big number.
That's a big number. So, the Jobs and Economics Opportunities Trust Fund, which is the JEOTF, that is projected sixty-nine million dollars and some change through 2025, which is the end of the voter-approved life expectancy. To date, the expenditures, including all the operating costs, have been just, just over thirty-four million, and there are just under thirty-two million that are already approved by the board, just not have, they just have not been expended yet. Also included with that is budgeting numbers for the, for all of the administration of the funds. So, now getting back to the tiny one, this is kind of more of a breakdown of those big numbers as to who got what funds, and the biggest one in there is the Pads and Pores Program in public infrastructure, they take about seventy-four percent of the allocated funds. There is employer training reimbursements, which has only been just over one percent of the funds, operating expenses was only just under three percent. Development and permitting fees was just at one and a half percent of, of the programs. Pasco Economic Development Council got thirteen percent of those. Redevelopment Loans, which is a new program within the Office of Economic Growth, only has a quarter of a percent, however, that's, hopefully, that is going to get bigger. That number, me personally and the other members of our board, would like to see that grow. If you don't know anything about the development loans, that is for businesses that are struggling, we're utilizing interest-free loans from the tax, from the Pay for Pasco Tax, to help them build, rebuild their, their outside of their building, bring them back up to code, especially in the blighted areas. We've started it mostly, or I say we, David Engel and his group has started that over in the holiday area, to help entice more people to show up there in a cleaner and a more safer environment for businesses. So, over the life of the loan, we do have several that you guys have already approved. I know some commissioners have not been here for the full time since 2015, so this might be some new information to you, which is why we talk about it. Not in great detail, however, these are our big programs, again, kinda hard to see, so I'll just name them off. We have some Metler Toledo Project, which was an expansion and relocation, they received seven, seven point six million, that created five hundred eighty-three full-time jobs with an average salary of fifty-eight thousand annually for those employees. We built, well-built, sorry, did an expansion and relocation that involved bringing in a hundred and ten full-time jobs at an average of seventy-seven thousand annually, and they received a hundred thousand dollar award. Touch Point Medical, they received two hundred fifty thousand, that brought in a hundred sixteen full-time jobs with an, with an average of fifty-seven and a half thousand salary. Then we have some future potential projects, Land Investment Partners, they received six million, that's part of the Pads and Pores Program, just like Harold, Harold Properties is part of the Pads and Pores as well. That is, these are all Class A office buildings, the Harold Properties, that one was seven million. Eminem Route 54 West, again, other Pads and Pores, received four million. Zever Hills Sewer, they did some site-ready work there, they got three and a half million. Overpass Business Park, along with all the wonderful traffic issues over there. Another conversation. That got two different, two different projects, one was for twenty thousand, another one's for a hundred and eighty-six thousand. Caldwell Avenue Properties did construction, again, for Pads and Pores, and they received one point five million. Moffitt Cancer was our big one, with the expansion and relocation, that was done last year, if I'm correct, with that, and they received twenty-five point seven million. And then the Old Pasco Widening, for public infrastructure, received three point two These are the active ones that are currently being, being built and, and moving forward. Some of those other ones that I had already mentioned have already completed their requirements, and all of the penny money is, has been allocated to them. And the important part about this slide here is, does this have a, this doesn't have a pointer, does it? Is that it? I wanna turn it off. Is this the pointer? Is there a pointer? Is that, is that a pointer? Oh, ooh, hey, look at that, I got it. All right, thank you, ma'am. So the important part about this slide is our estimated GCP. If you don't, if you're unaware of what GCP is, as the gross county product, just like your GDP that you would see in economics for the nation, this is about the county. So, the Pay for Pasco is for Eminem Route 54?
What is that? I don't remember what that is.
Eminem Route 54 West?
Yeah, I don't remember, that's a lot of jobs.
Mr. Engel?
That is the town center. Eminem 54 is the Mitchell Ranch Town Center. They're incentivized to build a office
The Harold Properties, that one was seven million. Eminem Route Fifty-four West, again, other Pads and Pores, received four million. Zever Hills Sewer, they did some site-ready work there. They got three and a half million. Overpass Business Park, along with all the wonderful traffic issues over there. Another conversation. That's got two different, two different projects. One was for twenty thousand, another one was for a hundred and eighty-six thousand. Caldwell Avenue Properties did construction, again, for Pads and Pores, and they received one point five million. Moffett Cancer was our big one with the expansion and relocation that was done last year, if I'm correct. With that, they received twenty-five point seven million. And then the Old Pasco Widening for Public Infrastructure received three point two million. These are the active ones that are currently being, being built and, and moving forward. Some of those other ones that I had already mentioned have already completed their requirements. And all of the penny money is, has been allocated to them. And the important part about this slide here is, does this have a, this doesn't have a pointer, does it? Is that it? I want to turn it off. Is this the pointer? Is there a pointer? Is that, is that a pointer? Oh, ooh, hey, look at that. I got it. All right, thank you, ma'am. So the important part about this slide is our estimated GCP. If you don't, if you're unaware of what GCP is, as the gross county product, just like your GDP that you would see in economics for the nation, this is about the county. So the Pay for Pasco is for Eminem Route Fifty-four.
What is that? I don't remember what that is.
Eminem Route Fifty-four West.
Yeah, I don't remember. That's a lot of jobs.
Mr. Engel?
That is the Town Center. Eminem Fifty-four is the Mitchell Ranch Town Center. They're incentivized to build a office building, a parking deck.
Oh, Eminem, okay.
Put in some spine roads.
Yeah, I know where that is. Okay.
Thank you, sir. So thirty-two hundred jobs, the Pay for Pasco gave them four million. They have a capital investment of two hundred million. The estimated gross county product that they're going to be helping us out with, this is my tax dollars coming back to us, hundred and fifty-two million. I'm not going to go through all of these because they're all very specific. But overall, the bottom line with all of these projects that are currently being invested in, six hundred and sixty, six hundred, sorry, I'm having a stroke, so let me go back there. All right, six thousand, six hundred and ninety-four jobs. Pay for Pasco cost from, is just under nineteen, just over nineteen million. But the estimated gross county product is over five hundred and seventy-three million dollars back into our local economy. So that's, that's pretty, pretty huge. So ROI, our return on investment, for every dollar that we get, that we spend on the Pay for Pasco, based off of every tax dollar that these jobs are creating, not just property taxes, but, you know, things that people buy, consumer taxes, sales tax, gas tax, all that. For every dollar, we're getting back twenty-nine hundred dollars annually.
That is a good return.
It's, it's okay.
I'll take that.
It's okay. This is actually my favorite slide.
Mine too.
And I wish it was bigger. Because if you like that one number about, you know, the big numbers of, you know, every dollar coming back as, as, you know, twenty-nine hundred dollars. This one is not about business. This one's about people. So, part of our allocation of awards has gone to workforce and training at Pasco Hernando Workforce Board. They received just over a million dollars, and this was last year. The purpose for it was to serve un, adult unemployed or underemployed residents to build technical skills and resumes on-the-job training. The requirement was that had to have a minimum of a hundred and fifty residents as participants. The end result was there was two hundred and one residents that participated in this program. Of that two hundred and one, ninety-two of them were registered, were homeless individuals. And those all, all those individuals were trained and were then offered jobs. And I believe they have around an eighty-two percent retention rate from these positions. So not only is the Pay for Pasco tax money going into helping train people, but giving them, making them a valuable member of our community. AM Skills, Commissioner Starkey is, yeah, she, she likes them a little bit. They expanded their advanced manufacturing workforce training programs. And they received a hundred and twenty-five thousand. The nice thing about this program is I actually was able to connect with a, one of the high schools. Knew somebody there, connected them with AM Skills because they were a coach, a life coach for at-risk kids. They'd never heard of AM Skills, and AM Skills does these little two-week boot camps for these at-risk youth to get them involved in technical education. And so that was kind of a neat little thing that I got to do as being part of this board. Had I not, I would have never heard of AM Skills, so.
Awesome.
So, see, there you go. Helping you out.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, so looking at the numbers, I think we can probably look to try to find if it's applicable use at one hundred twenty-five thousand. There's got to be a way we can increase that number up.
That would be fantastic. Thank you. Because this, a lot of the money we get is very restrictive. And so we try and be less restrictive with that. So that, that would be very helpful.
They have, we've been giving them a reduced amount every year, mainly because, if I remember correctly, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but AM Skills has grown since they first started. And they started getting into some, I believe they got their nonprofit status and so forth. So now they're getting additional funding through other, other avenues. So, but if there's other companies that are like that, absolutely, I think that's, I think there's, it's a good, it's a good opportunity.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
With the new Amazon announcement.
Yes.
And the AM Schools is going to be right alongside there. There's going to be a huge expense doing robotics, so it may be something to take a look at.
Yeah, we want to go in and help another school build a robotics training program. So that's, that's our goal for the big lift for the next years, to get students involved in robotics.
Yes, ma'am. And then Pasco EDC with some entrepreneurship programs. They received two point eight million for a new cooperative funding agreement. And, and so again, that's, these are all programs that are impacting individuals and not just businesses themselves. So, and that's at the end of, at the end of the day, that's what we're here for. So the economic empowerment, again, you know, AM Skills, Career Source, Micro Loan Program, Smart Starts. These are, again, all of the various programs that the Pay for Pasco Jobs and Economics Opportunity Trust Fund goes towards improving. Standby, I had one more paper here. Hold on a second. We're not done. Hang on. Lost my, lost my piece of paper. I had stuff written on it. Hold on a second. There it is. Okay, so in conclusion, the Jobs and Economics Opportunities Commission does have a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners that we, that we have, would like to ask. And that is to expand the oversight of it to include reviewing all of the economic growth, all the Office of Economic Growth programs, regardless of whether the Pay for Pasco funding is being used for it. Mainly because it's all about economic opportunities and jobs. It's not just about using the Pasco County funds for it. The other request that we have is that we expand the marketing for the Pay for Pasco projects so that it's a little bit more represented, such as putting the Penny logo on project communications, requesting that if an organization does receive funds from the Pay for Pasco, that they do put the Penny, Penny logo on their website. And also such as like the Pasco EDC, Pasco Hernando Work, Workforce Board, and AM Skills. Just putting that logo there just so that it's branded. Because there is a, a disconnect, I believe, with a lot of what the penny does. Even though this is just a portion of the penny, the school board gets most of it. But this is still a big piece of.
They get forty-five, they get forty-five cents of it. We get equal amount, but they get to keep all theirs. We split ours with a lot of people.
We split ours three ways.
Very generous, yeah.
So the JEOC concludes, as far as our report goes, that in 2021, the Pay for Pasco Trust Fund program is being aggressively and appropriately administered to meet the goals of keeping Pasco County economically vibrant. Furthermore, it is helping to facilitate the creation of high-wage jobs and diversifying the county's future tax income streams. It is working to improve the lives of Pasco County residents. We'd also like to commend Mr. David Engel and Steve Smith of the Office of Economic Growth for their work of, in making the programs successful in 2021.
And I want to thank you, and I'm sure the board does, for your volunteering to serve on this important committee. And we really appreciate all the work that you guys do and support for the county.
Thank you.
We'll make sure you get invited to our AM Skills grand opening.
Absolutely. Any questions?
Anybody else? Well, thank you very much. That was, oh, do we have a copy of that? Because I don't have it in my, I'd love to copy that report.
It'll be in the PowerPoint we send out afterwards, the master PowerPoint. I'll just, to echo, you know, talking to David, we, we concur with their recommendation with respect to oversight over all OEG programs. And then on the second one, I adamantly support the use of the penny logo on organizations that receive penny money in those programs. And not just that, I would expand that to organizations that receive county money should be acknowledging us with the use of the county logo at certain events and certain places too, because there are organizations I go to events and you don't see. And we've sponsored a decent amount, whether it's penny or county.
Agreed.
So we will work to reinforce that with these, but that may need help from, from the board as well, so.
Nice, good idea. David, did you want to say anything?
No, I just wanted to thank the JEOC for a great year. They provide great insight, a lot of energy and good ideas. And we graciously applaud and accept the additional oversight because we're much more sophisticated than we were three or four years ago. And I thank the board for your time.
And thank you, David. You did a great job. Yeah.
And didn't we just have an announcement? I got an email this morning, NGTV coming in with thirty jobs.
Oh, Navigation? Yeah. Yes, sir. They took the former Oscar site in the Trinity Business Park. Is that what we call that?
Yes, it's a pad-ready site right on Trinity Boulevard.
I, I met with the young couple last week. Very, very interesting, dynamic couple. And to think what they've done in three years is just mind-boggling, mind-boggling.
So if you want trendy athletic wear, you know where to get it.
Yeah, it's.
Just for present.
No, I think it's for information only. Presentation only.
Yeah, no, no action, just presentation only. If we need to tweak anything in the resolution, we'll bring that back at a future date.
And they think that that, that facility is going to be open very quickly. They're doing a tilt wall construction. It's very nice. And I think that's just the beginning for that couple. They're twenty-nine and twenty-seven years old. In three years, fifty million dollars in sales, all through social media. Started it in college.
Oh, that's.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. Sixty jobs, I think. So next we have, I think we have Planning and Development. I think this is going to be continued, but.
Yes, ma'am. We are going to, there's more work that needs to happen with the, the stakeholder group. And so we want to pause this and bring it back after we continue to work with some stake. We've, we've met with them, but we need some continued dialogue and bring it back, probably at the Newport Ritchie meeting in March.
Okay.
So the twenty-second of March.
All right, so. So do we need a motion to continue? No?
No, ma'am. It's a regular item. We'll just bring it back on the agenda when we, when we're ready for it.
And now we have.
And now we have Adam.
We have Adam.
Did you bring pie? I think it's all even. No? We still have some more, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair, fellow commissioners. Thank you so much. It's, it's that time of year again when we talk about the great things of tourism and what tourism does for the economy. So today before you, we are going to review the Economic Impact and Visitor Tracking Report for Fiscal Year Twenty-One. I, I do want to preface this as how this data is aggregated in visitor intercepts, face-to-face intercepts at local attractions, vacation rentals, hotel motels, RV parks, campgrounds, our lodging establishments, retail and restaurants, and also boat ramps as well. And we also reach out to our visitors via email as well. So we aggregate about over twenty-five hundred data touchpoints of our visitors over the course of the last year. So that's what you're going to see here. And we're going to start with some big numbers, the economic impact of what it really means to Pasco County's economy. And what it means is that seven hundred and twenty-one million dollars was the economic impact over the course of fiscal year twenty-one, which is over a ten and a half percent increase from 2019.
Wow, that's great.
That economic impact stemmed from over five hundred and eleven million dollars of visitor spending. And that's visitor spending on restaurants, on gas, on lodging, on attractions, on entertainment over the course of the year. And that's, again, up another ten and a half percent from fiscal year 2019. All the economic impact and visitors stimulus, visitor spend in the economy stems from one point three million visitors over the course of twenty-one. And that's up over thirty percent from 2019 number. Our greatest year ever, we welcomed one million visitors to the county. And in 2021, from right off the heels of a pandemic, we welcomed over thirty, or three hundred thousand additional visitors. That generated about one point four million room nights, which is, again, another sixteen and a half percent growth from fiscal year 2019.
That's a big number.
Yes, ma'am. And the jobs that support our industry, not only in our industry, but the indirect and direct jobs, is over ninety-two hundred jobs within the county of Pasco County, all generating wages and salaries over two hundred and thirty-one million dollars for Pasco County jobs. Again, that's another increase of almost thirty-eight percent year-over-year from 2019 numbers. And again, the, what, what Pasco County tourism, the industry does for the citizens, that every hundred and forty-seven visitors we welcome into the county, into the destination, provides one job. So we ask the question, you know, you don't work in the industry, you don't, you're not involved with tourism. How does this affect me as a resident of Pasco County? And it affects you because we save every Pasco County household over three hundred eighty-five dollars in state and federal taxes on an annual basis. So we're a tax saver. And I don't know about you, but I love saving at least three hundred and eighty-five dollars on my annual taxes. So looking at the return on marketing investment for Pasco County, and this is just our resources that we use for marketing. This is our digital footprints, our print, collateral materials, our social media, our website, all the things that we invest on an annual basis, which is still short resources, brings every dollar, every dollar we spend on Florida Sports Coast marketing and advertising brings back seventy dollars in visitor spending. So pre-visit, we took a look at the big picture of economic impact and what it provides to Pasco County economy. We're going to look at the visitor journey and how they get here. So who they are and the reasons why they are visiting Pasco County. So twenty-nine percent of them are visiting friends and family, so thirty percent are, are here for visiting relatives. Sixteen percent are attending a sports event throughout the county, and eleven percent are here just to get away for a small vacation. The mode of transportation for Pasco County travelers, there's no shock here that we are still a drive destination. So eighty-five percent of our visitors are, are driving to Pasco County. And the other fifteen percent are using Tampa International Airport as their airport of travel. Awareness of advertising, this is a big picture for us because three out of five visitors are seeing our marketing efforts. So we are capturing that marketing, share of marketing and that share of voice within the marketplace of our visitors. So our strategy is, is, is really focused on hitting the right visitor at the right time, through the right medium, to get the ultimate return. And you see it here that three out of five visitors were exposed to Florida Sports Coast advertising before they made their decisions on coming to Florida Sports Coast, in turn, Pasco County. How they're seeing us, thirty-five percent are seeing this on digital billboards. That could be on the road, or that could be on a website, or on your phone through social media, and also online advertising in our banner ads. So the traveler profile, who are they and where are they coming from? Forty-six percent are coming from Florida. We are an in-state drive, market-drive destination primarily. And then out of market, out of Florida, you can. you can see that the bulk of our visitors are coming from the southern states. But this has shifted a little bit because of our marketing strategy to really focus on the Midwest markets. And you can see the results of our visitors, 20% of them are coming from Michigan. They're coming from Ohio. They're coming from Indiana. And we've made a strategic move to actually focus on the Midwest because they are staying a little bit longer and spending a little bit more while in Pasco County. In 2021, the international border still hasn't opened yet. So you can see only 1% actually came to Pasco County for a vacation or a sporting event. We believe it is a sporting event because we have the data that actually supports the visitor and the teams that are actually coming from South America. So now that the borders are open and it is tour season, it is snowboard season, we're going to see these numbers actually start pointing north, which is going to bring an extra economic impact and more stimulus to Pasco County. So our travel parties, close to 3% are traveling in a... I'm sorry, three bodies are traveling in a particular group to Pasco County. And one of three groups are traveling with persons under the age of 20. So we are a family-driven destination. The visitor profile, 48 years old, average household income is just under $90,000. And the females are still driving the decision-making in households at 55%. So this is very important to our data and our research that really hones in of the people that are coming to Pasco County or the visitors that are coming to Pasco County. That 30% out of 100, or 1.4 million visitors, 30% of them are first-timers, which is great. So it goes into the visitor experience, which is the length of stay, how long they're staying. They're staying on the average of four nights in Pasco County. And they're staying at... 35% are staying in hotel motels. 17% are staying with friends and family. And almost 40% of them are staying, are just coming in for the day, spending money, and then returning back to their homes. Post-trip evaluation, this goes back to the visitor satisfaction. And this is a huge KPI for the DMO that at a, on a scale of 1 to 10, visitors actually gave us an 8.5 as a place to visit. And 93% of them are planning to return to Florida Sports Coast in Pasco County. So the perception of Pasco, this is just a couple of slides out of our full report. Pasco County is a wonderful vacation spot. It has everything a visitor could need. It's beautiful here, amazing waters, beautiful views and activities, lots of sunshine and great water views. And beautiful and vibrant. Pasco County farms, cows, and open roads. It's just so pretty. So these are some of the perceptions of what the visitors are experiencing here. So you can see that the brand promise is being satisfied, but also the visitor experience is being satisfied once they're in market. And that's why you see a high rate of return of 93% for first-time visitors.
Is that above average?
It's above average for us. Yes, ma'am. We are benchmarking that against ourselves year-over-year for visitor experience and the visitor promise. Are we satisfying the visitor promise according to our brand guidelines and our attractions and everything that we have to offer the visitor once they're in market? Yes, ma'am. So that was a 10-minute presentation for a year's worth of data and collection.
Madam Chair, thank you, Madam Chair. I can't say enough about Adam and his team, and I know you guys feel the same. I think I've been on the TDC for, what, five years now?
Five years.
Five years. And what progress, grown by leaps and bounds. It's just amazing, amazing what your team does. And again, I can't say enough about his team. And Adam, I mean, Adam and I spend a lot of time together. It's like a second full-time job for me, I think. You know, helping out and helping to promote Pasco County tourism. But I'll give an example, just last week with the groundbreaking of Popstroke, which is the product of Tiger Woods and his team, which will be built in the Wesley Chapel area across from the outlet malls and Sierra's property. The gentleman there, Greg, which was one of the partners in Popstroke, one of the reasons he actually built here is because he was coming here because of his kids' travel tournaments they play. And he saw the potential in that Wesley Chapel market directly off, you know, 75 and 275. That actually, in addition to bringing tourism here, it's actually helping to break businesses here because people are becoming aware of what Pasco County has to offer. We're such a diverse county when you think about it. So we're a large county. I leave my house, I can get to Orlando in about 55 minutes without traffic, right? But it takes you about that long to get to the northeastern side of Pasco County as well because we're such a large county. But when you traverse through the county and you go through the hills of Dade City, we're having some of these great cycling events, another one coming up soon, you might even want to mention that. And you go to the central Pasco, and then you go to the west side and our beautiful coast, which I spent a lot of time on boating and fishing. But there's so many opportunities for the citizens, not only Pasco County, but for our visitors as well, to come here and partake. If they're at Center Ice or the Weybridge Sports Campus or at a volleyball tournament at Southwest, there's so many things for them to do in this county. Let's be honest, it's night and day from where, what it was, I know, when we all first came on the commission. Not that it's a bad thing, but it's so... There's so many more options to keep the people here. Because previously, people would come to Pasco County if they could find a hotel to stay in. They would more than likely go to Hillsborough County or Pinellas County to do their shopping and eating and drinking and things like that. Guess what? They don't have to leave any part. And with the number of hotels we have coming up, the beautiful new hotel we have over the Weybridge Sports Campus with a rooftop bar, well, that's going to drive more people, not only to stay here when they're here for events, but it's going to help our local economy as well because people will go there instead of leaving Pasco County to have the same experience. So thank you again for all of this.
Commissioner Oakley.
Adam, I thank you for all the good work your staff do in this tourism area. And we certainly appreciate Mr. Moore's leadership also in that. But I keep telling him, the reason it's so busy around Wesley Chapel is because he's caused all this with you and your team to happen. So it's a great thing for the county, and we certainly appreciate. But they can't forget what causes this traffic.
So I remember a number of years ago, over 10 years ago maybe, the Tampa Bay Partnership did this survey about why, what, where would you go? You know, what's a reason to go to this county, that county, or that county? And they were gathering like the top things. The only thing that came up in Pasco County actually was Starkey Wilderness Park. That was it. And they couldn't, no one, you know, the area couldn't think of any other reason to come up to Pasco County. So now, I'm sure if they did that less again, there, we may have more stuff than anyone else. So it's amazing what has happened over the last 10, 15 years. And it's exciting. I mean, we have growing pains from it, but we have solutions for those, too. So, anyone else?
Yeah, Adam, you've done a phenomenal job since coming on. When we look at all the things, the Weybridge Sports Complex you mentioned, that was a huge thing that really set the tone of people staying instead of out of county, they're in county. You know, Saddle Brook starting way back a long time ago, the hockey rink coming in. Gordy and Mitch, phenomenal project what they brought in. It's just like driving stuff. You know, Southwest is going to be taken up more and more. And we got our first tournament coming up. That's not our first one, but it's a big one coming up.
Nice.
You know, Snowcat Ridge, Hollow Screen, those activities, you can do other things while you're here.
Scalloping?
Scalloping up and down. You know, Larry Pendleton, who used to be the chair of the, CEO of the Florida Sports Foundation, he always said to me, that just stuck in my head when I was on the TDC, he says, "The purpose of tourist development is not tourist development. It's economic development." So as you touched on, when you get people to come from other places and they see what a great place this is to be, it's going to drive these executives to come in and say, "You know what? I want to bring my business here. I want to live here. I want to raise my family here. I've got so much to do. I'm going to come back again." So everything that you're doing with tourist development is leading to many, many other great things coming on. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right. I think that's it for you. Thanks again.
I will add one last thing, that tourism is the purest form of economic development. And every economic development starts with a visit. Thank you very much.
Very good. Nice.
And thanks for the pie. Okay, now we're on to commissioners' items. Commissioner Oakley.
I have a couple of items. Saturday, I was the guest of Traveler's Rest when they celebrated their 50 years. It's been a travel park here in the community. They started in 1972. There's roughly 1,500 homes or more. It's actually, and a lot of you don't see it because it's out in the rural area there on the west side of Interstate 75 from 41, County Road 41. And they are very happy to be a part of our community, and we're happy to have them as a part. It's like a city of its own. It's a community because it has their own fire station. They have their own sheriff's deputy. They have their manager, which they consider their city manager. And then they have their board. And so many people, they recognized the other day, 28 years of giving for different social activities, people working toward that during that 50 years, 28 years being a part of that. And others just being leaders in their own community and learning how to live with each other and be with each other. And they're very happy, and they're very happy to be a part of the county. And we work, my office works very well with them. And we've been able to help them through some issues of permitting and things like that. So it was a great visit, but it's happening on Saturday, so 50 years in our community. And then the other thing, when I left there that morning, I came out on County Road 41, and we're always talking about bicyclists out on the roads. And they were all in single file. They were all in my lane. I was behind them. And even though they were trying to beat to the right side of the road, they take up about three foot of the right side of the road of, you know, it's an arterial road. It's a country road out there. So it's just not wide enough. I could not pass. There was curves or hills, you know, you had to go to, and you had to be very careful. And then after I got by them, there was another group turning in front of me that I had to wait for to turn, go across, and going on Jasmine Road. So I mean, I appreciate the fact they all come, and I enjoy their sport. They have the right to be on that road.
Yeah.
But to me, it was very dangerous. So I'd rather see them on our trails. And I'd rather see that our roads built to where we have bicycle lanes to take care of them. So, but to me, it just seemed like it was a dangerous situation that could happen if you're not paying attention.
So let's bring it up again at the MPO because the DOT does have safety money. Comes out of some group out of University of Florida.
Right.
And that's how Hernando County got the wider shoulders on Spring Lake, Spring Hill.
But 41 is one of those ones. We've got some paving, but I don't know if we have widening in that paving from 21st to Parish Grove Road, I think, that's scheduled sometime in the near future.
You know, that's why we did that AECOM study is to say, which road should we put the shoulders on, wider shoulders?
And it needs to be in this area.
Yeah, so let's keep working on that.
All right. That's all I have.
Commissioner Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one item. And I'm actually sad to let you know that one of the young people that were there the first day we opened the universally inclusive playground has passed away. You know, the day, if you were there that day when we opened the playground and did the ribbon cutting and everything, he was, without naming his name at this time, he was one of the kids that made all the news stories in the papers and things like that. He was just having a time. So I was having conversations with some of the folks in our community, especially in the Wesley Chapel community, and I had a conversation with Keith Wiley. And we also communicated via contact with the parents as well. We thought it'd be very nice to dedicate that playground with a signage or plaque to that young man. So what I would ask today is if you would please help honor him. And I talked to Keith, and we were just asking for up to $1,000 to build and make this plaque or sign dedication. And then when that time comes, we'll let you all know because once it's built, we will have a little ceremony for, and his family will be there.
Nice. That's a great idea.
If I could have a motion or...
I'll move.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye?
All right. Thank you all. That's all I have. Thanks.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Thank you. As you know, we've been working on some, an inclusive playground on the west side of the county. And here is one of the renderings. And if we can, what I would like to say is we have CDBG funds and GEO bond funds. And based on the community input, there is about a $50,000 shortfall. So I am working on fundraising, but I would like to request that the board be in support of covering the gap in the interim so we can move forward with procurement and construction so it can be opened for the kids by this summer. We're running the numbers for children under the, or people, citizens under the age of 18 on SSI. In that area, there's 411 kids with special needs in that area. So I feel it's very important that we target that area and provide a playground for all children. The next page is just the letter that I'll be going out for donations. And when they came back to the rendering, with the renderings, I had requested some additional items. Some of the additional items included monkey bars for upper body strength. And they have, I know Parks and Rec had included some spinning cups and things like that. So if you'd like to go to the next slide. So the additional cost ended up being about $50,000. So I would like to make a motion to move forward.
Oh, wait a minute. So that's a big number. So you're asking the board to pay for it, or...
I'm asking the board, so I'm correct. Requesting if the board would be in support of covering the gap in the interim so we can move forward with procurement and construction while we go out and collect, while I go out and collect donations. And I already have meetings set up and developers onboard. So it will be completed by summer.
I'm very, I mean, obviously, I'm very supportive of this happening on the west side of county. I don't think you need to do that yet because you have design, you have to pay for, you go out to procure.
We're ready for procurement.
No, Commissioner, we're ready to go to construction at this point.
Okay. Oh, I got you. Okay.
In order for the board to award the contract, we need to have it fully funded. The intent here is we'll cover the gap with general fund while the commissioner goes and raises money to cover the deficit.
And I was diligently being out there collecting.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
One more discussion?
Commissioner Mariano?
I mean, if...
We have a motion and a second.
So let's give her a moment of time. If she comes up with the money, great. But if she doesn't, I don't want to see her. I'll just keep on going. It's a very, very poor area.
Yeah.
So we need to make sure it happens.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you can raise the money to offset the difference, and so be it. But we need to find the money if we don't.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. All right.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your support in helping service these children in the area. Another concern that I had is going out to specific parks and seeing a lot of the safety concerns. I am working very diligently with Parks and Rec. I did not provide photos today. If you truly would like photos, I could provide them. But I prefer, just if everyone can keep in mind, if we need to direct more and additional funding to these parks, there are safety concerns, and I do not want to see any children get hurt. And due to liability, just to maybe start thinking on expanding the budget for Parks and Rec so children can be safe. And if we can invest in our youth today, maybe they won't end up with addiction, mental health, and homelessness. So I really truly feel we need to start focusing on our youth to provide a better quality of life in the future and so they can become productive members in society. Lastly, I would like to discuss or bring up if we could have a citizens' ordinance advisory where citizens can come in and have an advisory, put their input. A lot of the times when citizens come to us while we're at the dais making the decisions, they've already gone through all of the processes, jumped through all the hoops, already have entitlements. And again, I find it difficult to take somebody's entitlements away once they already have them. So I really feel that citizens want to be involved. They really need to come in on the ground floor. So I would like to have their voice be heard, possibly at a citizens' advisory committee.
So that's interesting because I served on one of those for years. And it was called the Citizens... And it was called the Citizens Ordinance Review Committee. And it was a county committee where we, where we were like the first, we were the beginning. We did the sign ordinance, the tree ordinance, the landscape ordinance, the right-of-way ordinance. We did a whole bunch of ordinances. And so I'm okay with that. I think that, the only thing is, is our staff is pretty burdened on time. And so it is a staff commitment to have the court, we call it quark, but we functioned pretty well for years. So.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
If I may, so historically, you had quark. Quark was dissolved when the, when we were starting the major rewrite of the land development code and an LDC stakeholders committee was formed. That worked for a while. And then because most of the people that were on the LDC stakeholders committee were involved in the development community, they requested to be disbanded because they didn't, they wanted to talk to each other because of sunshine concerns. So that went away and in its place, the horizontal and vertical round tables were put in place where staff brings to the development community new LDC ordinances. Now, that being said, citizens are not on those things. Now, on the other hand, you've got a planning commission and that's really their job is to vet the ordinance before it gets to you. But you can, I mean, you can have a, you can reinstitute quark if you wish. But that's, historically, that's sort of how you got to today.
And I appreciate the compliment, but right now, I mean, our staff is overloaded. I don't see how they can take anything else on. They're trying the hardest to get through permits and review processes and things. If we pull any of them off right now, this, in my opinion, is just not the right time. Maybe down the road when things settle down, look at this again. But we can't pull one staff member for one minute of the day off anything. I mean, we are so backed up right now. It's insane. And I see the county administrator saying, yes, we're backed up. I think Sally would agree, we're backed up. I mean, I just, and we can't hire anybody because it's not, we're not in the new, you know, you gotta wait till the next budget cycle to actually find somebody and put it in the budget to hire. So.
Well, we have additional seats that have not been hired. So there are full-time employee openings. You just don't.
It's, well, it's hard to, it's hard to.
It's hard to hire right now.
Commissioner Mariano.
I don't think we need to start a new committee up either. I mean, frankly, our county attorney has got so many things with difficulty in hiring people to go do these things. He's outsourcing things with the salary money he's got. So to take even, put another thing on his shoulder right now, it's just going to push other stuff back down the road. I find if citizens have an issue, they bring it forward. We can bring it here. They can come right to here. We can discuss it, get it going forward quickly and easier if we think it's worthwhile, rather than going through a committee to, again, take up more staff time. It's hard enough to get what they got to get done already.
I agree that there is a backlog. I also agree when citizens come, the day of, and it's come to the point, it's almost at the final decision and things are already completely in place. And they've already been through planning and they're coming to their board for their final hearing. If they want to be involved, they would really need to be involved at the ground level. So something to think about.
Just one more thing. And I, listen, I sincerely appreciate all your comments and things. There's such a variation of what ordinances and what they're going to do at the same time. So if you have an ordinance, there may be a large amount or a small amount of people that actually, that might impact or may not impact. But 95% of the rest of them aren't going to care about it because it's not going to have an impact on them. So also, it may be difficult to find that makeup of people that are really going to be truly engaged through the entire process. Because again, it may not have an impact on them. But that's just my opinion. But again, I appreciate the consideration. I just don't think now's the right time, especially with staffing.
I understand with staffing. I appreciate the conversation. I know I couldn't discuss this behind closed doors due to sunshine. So I appreciate the open conversation today, but the citizens are aware.
Yeah. So I, I am sympathetic to that opportunity because that is how I was able to advance some initiatives that were important to me, like landscaping, signage, cell towers, billboards, all that kind of stuff. And I hope that we can find a way for more citizen input as we, you know, grow. So I think it's important. But I too think our staff can't handle one more thing right now. So we need to look for a creative way for citizen input, in my opinion.
Thank you. I agree.
Commissioner Mariano?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, the presentation with tourist development was really impressive. And if you remember one thing, the high percentage of people like what they saw, they'll come back again. I want you to think along the US 19, whether in Holiday or Hudson, when you see the Panhandle's that are out there. Now, I'm glad, next meeting, we've got the ordinance, I believe, is coming up, Jeff? Right-of-way use ordinance?
We, I thought I told you March, but I may have told you that the second meeting.
So shortly, it's coming up.
Yeah.
When I'm driving here today, I'm driving down 5A Road, I see bed frames, I see snipe signs, I see trash all the way down. Coming down Little Road, on Little Road now, a mattress on the side of the right of way. Snipe signs on the right of way. A bag of trash on the side of the right of what's coming down. All the look that we have out there, we need to, I think we need to look at getting a cleanup crew that can drive around our busy arterials anyway to get them cleaned up. So we get something done. I called on it yesterday. Still up there today. So.
Who did you call?
Went to Public Works.
Yeah. See, I didn't even know we're supposed to call Public Works for that stuff.
Yeah. So, you know, busy, et cetera. But when I look at the trash, there's like a Wendy's that's got a homeless thing in there. We've tried to clean it up once, cleaned it out twice. They're back with a vengeance now. Right beside it, there's a new construction going on. There's a retention area. Trash everywhere. We gotta, we gotta clean this stuff up. And Dan, if you can maybe put a plan together, what we can go do, I'll have to take you for a ride to go look at it. I mean, Beacon Woods Drive, where the canal is by the Walmart.
Can you put my picture up?
There was homeless people in there. When they did the development, they did it as a conservation easement, right, a mitigation area. So here's what we've got. We've got a canal on one side of US 19 toward the Beacon Woods side, loaded with trash, both sides, right? Vegetation going everywhere. I got trees where they like to hide under, et cetera. And it just is, I got tons of trash. We literally picked up bundles and bundles of stuff. And it's still there. We're going to try to put a cleanup crew together. Go back out there and just rake it all up. So I bring John Poondo from Swiftwood out there. I says, John, I says, you know, you gotta let us get this vegetation out of here. The homeless are coming in. It's destroying it. He says, oh, we can't do that. It's a conservation easement.
Yep.
I go, wait a second. I says, look at what's here. Look at what it's causing because of your conservation easement. I said, now let's go walk. And we walked to the bridge. We looked on the side down the Leisure Canal on the other side. Nothing but grass, right? No vegetation, no homeless at all. There, no big trash on that side anymore with all the fencing we did. So I get a government telling me we can't go clean up what we want to go clean up to make it set because of the easement, even though on the other side of the same canal, we can treat it differently.
Let me, let me ask you a question. And could you put my photo up, please? Because this is what I was going to talk about, but you're there.
It's making its way through the process.
Okay. So if it's a conservation easement and it's a Swiftwood, is it Swiftwood? I'm just kind of curious because there's one on Sunlake Boulevard that has a homeless camp. Where actually, they had a guy, a dead guy in there. And all the camp did was move a little over because he smelled. But we can't grub it because it's conservation land. So why don't we start, can we ask, can we make Swiftwood start cleaning up, cleaning those up? And then they'll see what we're up against? Why do we have to clean up their conservation property? And then maybe they'll be more sympathetic.
Well, let's, I mean, let's try because right now.
Now, look at my photo.
Yeah, I saw that.
So zoom in, please. Can you see what's going on there?
Who is that?
Someone's sleeping.
Yeah, I wasn't sure what he was doing there. I wasn't sure if he was alive or dead.
Okay.
But this is my trouble creek in 19. They are living there on, and they, and there is a trespass agreement with Walgreens here. But, but you know, they're, they're living there. And this is in the rain. This guy is like out there. Frankly, I don't know. I alerted the sheriff and our county staff and I don't know what happened.
Code was out there the next morning and he was already gone and Walgreens had made him leave.
But the tent is still there. The tent was still there. And they added to it that tarp. But this is on US 19 in our county.
But that's also private property.
Well, this side is. The other side is not. It goes to both sides. On the other side, I didn't take it from the roadside. There is a shopping cart and bikes and garbage. And this garbage is up and down the area here. And it's, it's really, it's incredible.
So, so why, and so the question is, why can't we go get that cleaned up?
But let me say that these people, our, like, we have gone to this group that's hanging out here. They don't want any county services. This is not the group that will say, that we've been able to house, you know, Marcy and her group done a fantastic job. But when he says, no, I like living here, what do we do? That's my.
They gotta go.
Where? That's, you know, how? That's.
Well, let's find out where they came from.
That's our big challenge, guys.
If Walgreens does not allow him and he does leave, so then he's not trespassed. But it's still private property. So then isn't Walgreens responsible for cleaning up their property?
Yes.
Yes.
So then Walgreens needs to go out and throw it away and clean up their property.
But I don't, I think, I don't, I don't know why, I don't know if they're comfortable going up and telling this guy to trespass him themselves. I mean, maybe they hire their own security company or something? Or maybe we have to start putting a fire on Walgreens to not allow this on their property? I don't know. We got the Bank of America, the homeless camp that was behind this, where a lot of these guys were living. One person, it turns out, for two years, we found the person who owned it. He did clean it out. He grubbed it. But I think they're going to come right back. But.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Alex, I'm going to try to put you on the spot or at all, but the sheriff's office actually has a business unit. I forgot the exact name of it. And they do a really good job. I, we've been in contact before and working with Chase. And if a business is, and I'm not just using this as any type of issues, where they need to trespass an individual or certain parties, they do a great job of working with the businesses and they'll show them through the process and take them through the process of what they need to do, which isn't that difficult. The bit, you know, this comes down to a business taking the initiative to make the call. If they make the call, they have people in each district, am I correct? Correct. Yeah. Each district in, correct. Yeah, Business Crime Prevention Unit. That's it. Business Crime Prevention Unit that they can reach out to. And they will meet with the general manager or district manager, whatever it is with Walgreens and walk through the process. They can do that. It's already in place.
And with the trespass agreement, those have to be renewed annually? And I know Code is working on creating their own trespass agreement file? And I know the sheriff's office also has one.
No, Code can't. Code doesn't have that authority.
Code is not having.
I'm not sure why they would be doing that.
Okay. Well, maybe I re-said that wrong. So if Code and the law enforcement goes out, for example, one of the, one of the concerns in, on a property where there was a fire just recently. And I was informed that the trespass agreement was expired and I contacted the owner. And it was actually renewed in May of 2021. So it was not expired. So where is a centralized database? And how can we have Code and law enforcement work together to both have access to that one database?
Well, the trespass agreement is part of the sheriff's office's responsibilities and program. They are, the Code should not be doing trespassing. That's not, that's not something that they have the authority to do. That's, that's something that, that's something that the sheriff's office has to do.
No, that's not what I was meaning. I was, was a way for them to look it up and have access to it.
To see if it has a trespass agreement so they can call the sheriff if.
Correct.
Yeah, I could see that being handy.
They have files and then that they look up in the car. Like when we did Leisure Beach the other day, they were able to go in there and say, okay, this one's got a trespass agreement and this one doesn't.
Code does?
Code does. I mean, well, the sheriff's office had it.
Well, I know the sheriff does. But it would be interesting, you know, it should, it would be good if Code had the ability to know if this one has that on it. So they could call the sheriff to come trespass.
I think they have access. Alex and Louboutin, no? They don't have access? All right. So.
I am concerned if it, if it's an annual thing. I'd rather it continue until someone chose to not have it continue.
That's exactly where I was going to go.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's why I want to bring Alex up and let him address that. Because like you say, why do I want to have an annual agreement? I want to put this agreement, keep it in place and let it run for eternity.
Until they choose.
Until ownership changes.
Yeah.
Alex Al, Intergovernmental Affairs Officer for the sheriff's office. So basically, all the, to your point, Commissioner Fitzpatrick, all of the trespass agreements are housed by the sheriff's office. It's a program that we do. So normally, how trespassing works is if a property owner sees somebody on their property that's trespassing, they can report to the sheriff's office to have them removed from the property. The way the trespass agreements work are, let's say it's a property owner who's no longer in the area or they're not able to supervise it on a daily basis. They have, they can set up an agreement with the sheriff's office to say, you know, no one's allowed on this property. Or, you know, certain individuals are, but if they're not this individual, they're not allowed on the property. And then they can be trespassed without, you know, explicit authorization from the property owner because they've already given it in writing. Now, to your point, Commissioner Mariano, the trespass agreements are all housed with the sheriff's office. But if the Code or one of the commissioners has a question about a particular property, they can always reach out to us and we'll, we'll share that information with them.
Is there any reason you can't share that with our Code directly so they can just access it rather than taking up your valuable time?
Yeah. So I can, I can check on our end. I don't know if that's something we can share due to security reasons. But I can check on my end if that's something I, so I know on an individualized basis, we can share it. I don't know if we can give complete access to somebody outside the agency. I could check, though.
Just, so you know that every time we have like a Harbor South Leadership Council meeting and they come, we encourage everybody to sign that trespass agreement. We want as many businesses as possible to sign that. Or HOAs, because sometimes they're living on the grounds inside a community. And so, you know, that form is important.
And Commissioner, to your point on that, so we actually have a link on our website as well that we can share with the commissioners if they'd like, that has the process laid out for property owners that if they're interested in trespass agreement, they can go through that process to get that signed up with the sheriff's office.
So when we see homeless people such as here, Leisure Beach, we know they're, it's not legal to go camp out on someone's property and live there, right? So for the, for our Code people to actually take a look at it, they're going to have to go look at the file, check one by one by one, just like your officers do as well. So having the access would be definitely beneficial, even just for that piece of information. If that can be a separate data file, we can access. It makes it a lot easier for Code to be able to say, okay, here's what's going on. Now, if we know they're breaking the law by having homeless people live in there, could be starting a fire, there was a smoke, drugs, as you saw pictures last week, you know, it's a behavior we want to stop. I mean, there's enough opportunities there. There's enough opportunities for mental health with the opioid thing that's out there now. If you want to get help, if you want to get a job, if you want to find a place, there's opportunities that are out there. We played out down at Leisure Beach, Leisure Lane, a few years back, 32 people were there. None of them took help.
Yeah, that's what happens.
What do they do? They just go somewhere else. But I mean, we've got to be vigilant that they just can't stay here.
I agree.
If they're somewhere else, we put money together or you give them a bus pass to go back to where they came from. And they have, what the sheriff's department and others want to have a place where they could land to go to. But you know what? If they just come down here and someone bust them down there, what do I care at this point?
So my understanding is the sheriff's department, and please correct me if I'm wrong, if they have a mental health issue, which most of those who don't want help do, there's not much they can do with them.
So basically, you can offer them the services and say, hey, these are all your options. These are things you can look into. But let's say we go out to a trespassing situation and we say they need to leave, the property owner does not want you on the property, and they leave. If they don't want to take the help that we're trying to give them, they're, you know, they have the rights and they can just say, no, thank you. I'll go about my day. So that's, that is, that's the difficulty. And basically, what our behavioral health intervention team does is if, whenever they're dealing with these individuals on a daily basis, trying to kind of break down those, that wall and say, hey, please accept this help. We're trying to get you help, get you to a better place. And that's basically the daily struggle of trying to make that happen.
And I know it's a battle and we've got people we've been working with and there's one person in Sea Ranch, we're trying to go ally them to make that fly. And you guys, many, many trips out there. But if they know they can't stay in a place to go to another place and get kicked out of there too, maybe they'll have enough.
Yeah.
Question for you though. Why, why do we just have an annual contract for these trespass agreements? Why can't it just run for the life of the ownership of the property?
So the reason for that is if property changes hands, so again, it's on a voluntary basis. So the property doesn't have, doesn't have to have a trespass. basis, so the property owner doesn't have to have a trespass agreement with the sheriff's office if they don't want to. So let's say property changes hands, and the new owner is not interested in trespass agreement, it gives them the opportunity every year to renew, so if there's a new owner, they don't have to go through this process of un-renewing or something like that.
But if you get someone, especially if he's out of town, you're not going to be able to contact him, you got to go through the whole loop. So we're going through that right now with the ones that have expired. If you just have it where that property agreement owns, as long as you own the property, you have an agreement in place. And then we'll know if ownership changes, that, okay, now we got to get the new guy to go have him sign up. But why have it expire? Why have to go through the hassle of going back through this again? It doesn't make any sense.
We have a meeting with sheriff tomorrow, we'll, I'll bring that in.
Sure, yeah, and, yeah, that is, you know, kind of a policy judgment call there, so I think that was the main reason that that was done, was, again, if you have, you know, they change their mind, or maybe they're not having trespass concerns anymore, they don't want that access anymore, but, you know...
If they change their mind, let them bring it back, and say, "Look, I don't want to do it anymore." They can do that. But once it's in place, let's keep in place till the ownership...
Or at least longer than one year, anyway. Three years.
Five.
Five years.
Why, but why end it if they don't want to end it? And let's face it, when you've got to renew something, you don't know what's coming up.
Yeah.
They're not going to do it.
And it's more paperwork to have to renew it every year, so it's less work...
We're just thinking of your workload.
Yes, and I appreciate...
I'd be happy to have those conversations with the sheriff on our end and see.
Yeah.
And I appreciate you building the rapport with people with mental health concerns. And I am working, I attended a meeting, the ASAP Board Meeting, and they do have help for people to enter transitional housing and grants to help them. And I'm also working on getting a list of transitional housing facilities, and also I'm working with Ms. Kathy's team on homeless and homeless lists.
And that flyer should be ready soon, I think. But thank, thank you very much. Do you have anything else, Commissioner Mariano?
A couple more things. I want to say, driving over here today on 52...
Yeah.
For the first time in two years, there wasn't traffic at 52 and 41.
I think it's a big time.
One light change to get through, it was, it was great. So I think, I think the Ridge Road extension is helping, so I'm going to make a statement. And, you know, Ridge Road could go all the way to Overpass. We saw all the constructions going on, we still see the traffic on 54, 56, et cetera.
Let me see how that would work.
If we get 54, I mean, 50, Ridge Road Extension to go all the way to Overpass and connect up there, there's ways to make it happen. There will be some houses that have to go, whatever, but you could make that connection, you could have a road going all the way to 301. And that would be, I think, ideal for this county long-term down the road.
I have to look at that map.
And Madam Chair, just to pile on a little bit, I don't know. Ralph, are you doing any updates tonight?
Yeah, I'm going to have them come up here.
I'm not going to steal your thunder, then.
I'm going to have them come up here.
I was just going to push up the good news.
Or the district.
I was going to have them come up here in my time, but at this point, we're about to hit lunch, so...
Well, let's, let's keep moving.
All right, I'll just do a couple, a couple more things. Had a meeting at Signal Cove last night about the dredging. They were just as incensed as Leisure Beach. I'm happy to say that Dan and Mike and the team are looking at some alternatives that will be coming up, and they're going to work that through. We are going to try to shorten the timelines up and going forward. We had a Restract Committee, actually, before I get to that, I want to say, I was reading the article in the Sun Coast News, I didn't watch the meeting with Fort Ritchie, but they, I guess they're going to take out the Harbor Isles portion...
Yes.
Which are very extensive homes. But the comment was made that they're going to leave Sand Pebble in. Sand Pebble is a gated condominium community. I mean, if we're going to clear out these non-blighted areas, Sand Pebble should be part of it, and I think we should coach Dan as he talks with them to make sure that comes out of CRA as well.
Do they have any single, sex Nate housing or affordable housing in there?
No.
It's a gated community.
Thank you.
You done?
Last thing, I'll say, and I think you may want to talk to this, but we did have a Restract Committee meeting the other day. We didn't have a quorum, there was confusion about getting in, getting out, but I will tell you, my assistant was there fifteen minutes after the meeting started.
I think they came at seven.
I know, so they're, they're an hour late, but anyway. So it was a little difficult to do it, but we didn't have, didn't vote on anything, but we did have a great presentation on baffle boxes. One of the things they talked about, which I wanted to bring to the core, is they've taken like a million pounds of contaminants that would have gone into Indian River Lagoon. Million pounds with the baffle box. They got 14 of them, they got set up, they've been working on these things for 16 years. I found out after the fact that St. Petersburg has got a bunch of them, Osmar's got a bunch of them, and there's even one in Tarpon Springs, so I was thinking I was going to go take the trip out to Melbourne Titusville, but frankly, we've got some local stuff to go look at. Adam, Alan, Biddlecombe was there, he's going to go find, find out more about it, Colleen's working on it as well, to go find out where these are, to go look at them, because they take out so much of pollutants that go in the water.
That's great.
Their water quality is going through the roof in height. I mean, they're really taking a lot of trash, they're taking a lot of contaminants because it filters all out, all those sediments that go in there, and their water quality's getting better. And I want to say, our stormwater team's done a phenomenal job with all the flooding that we used to have up and down the coast. Our water quality's gone up so high, this Hudson Artificial Reef Project that we try to do, because our seagrass has come back so well in that one area or the two areas that we picked out, the Army calls us, "Well, the seagrass is here, you can't go build the artificial reef there now."
Oh, we'll take it on our side, down by us.
So wherever it may go, I really think...
We still need one.
No, no, well, I was going to say, going through the Restract process, it takes steps and steps and years and years, right? But I think if we go look at tourist development, to go take a look at, maybe take a look at that cost, the cost could probably go way down. The monitoring cost, much, much higher going restore, you got to report, report, it would take all that away, we'd just probably get it done. So if I, I asked Curtis Frank, I says, "Please go to tourist development, I will make mention to the board that I'm supportive of it, I think it's a good place to fund it, not a ton of money, but its long-term benefits are definitely there." And that is all, yeah.
Can we have Ralph come up in the next five minutes and report?
Sure, I'll make him, I'll cut his time, because he'll make it fit. I have three minutes, so. I will say, while he's on his way up, I just want to, you know, recognize on the good news stuff, the Public Works and Solid Waste, our Keep Pasco Beautiful did some work at Florida Arbor Day a couple weeks ago, and gave out about 200 trees to people who are there, and then talked to them about recycling and stuff like that. So a lot of good work happening out there, so. With that, I'll give it to Ralph, and he can talk about what our friends in Tallahassee are doing.
Thank you. Good morning, Ralph Lehrer, Intergovernmental Affairs Officer. So I emailed this information to you yesterday morning, so you'll have it. But on Friday, the Senate and House rolled out their preliminary budgets. The Senate came in at $108.6 billion, and the House at $105.3 billion. Their bills will be considered in the Appropriations Committee, both in the House and the Senate, tomorrow, and then it will go to the floor next week, and then to conference. So going into the preliminary budgets with our... Where we are on our projects that we submitted. Just a moment. Okay, I'll just, I'll just tell you where we are at, so you'll know. Ridge Road Extension, we put in for Ridge Road Extension Phase 2B. It is in the Senate budget, fully funded at $14 million. Our Pasco County Green Key Drainage Improvements, we put in for $2 million. There's a placeholder in the House for $1 million.
Wait, wait, you passed over the boat ramps and parking.
So far with the boat ramps, with the $1.8 million, did not make either side, so we'll, you know, we still have conference, so we'll see...
Wait, it didn't make it in anywhere?
It did not get in the House, it did not get in the Senate, no.
That's a bummer.
There's a placeholder of $1 million in the Senate for a sports training and youth tournament complex, it's a $35 million ask, again, $1 million placeholder. There are two projects that the County Sheriff's Office got in, a Community Outreach and Engagement Initiative for $150,000, and that was fully funded in the Senate, partially funded in the House at $125,000, and a Center for Recovery of Endangered and Missing Persons, $3,200,000 in the Senate, not in the House right now. I got to say also that our municipalities on the east side did put in requests, so San Antonio, Date City, and Zephyr Hills have some requests in both sides of the budget. So, again, early, still have a ways to go. So we will go in to, like I said, the House and the Senate voting out their budgets next week, and then they'll be in posture to go and do conference and negotiate the outcome for the final budget. And as you know, we only have a couple more weeks left, we end March 11th with session, so I'll be going up there on those last final weeks to see what we can do.
So Ralph, I'm looking at a bigger, I was looking on my phone, so it really wasn't loading up right.
Yeah.
Now I'm looking on my giant iPad.
Okay.
Are you saying that only things in parentheses are funded? Because it's not clear on here.
No, no, it's in color, and you don't see that.
No.
So, so basically, there's an amount, that was the full ask, and then the Senate, when you, when you see it, it was in green, that was in their budget, House was in yellow, partially funded was in parentheses. You don't see it, I will get one printed up for you during break, and then I'll give each of you a copy. So again, and I did have a breakdown saying that, again, Senate in green, House in yellow, parentheses is partial amount.
This is how it's showing up, like that.
Yeah, it's...